I'll call this session to order. Will you all join me in the pledge to allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Are there any changes to the agenda tonight?
Yes, I have a change. I'd like to add a budget transfer for $10,762.20. And this is to address the extending of power lines to the maintenance garage and to hook up propane to the building, including gas line trenching, propane pipelines, and line hookups.
Okay.
Under the consent agenda?
Yes, consent agenda.
On the consent agenda, okay.
We're doing a consent agenda now, and I also have some changes.
Okay, go ahead, Laurel.
Okay, we need to add some and modify some retirements resignations. Teresa Sargent, JGS teacher, retirement effective June 30, 2021. Marilyn Shea, RMS associate, effective October 9, 2020. And Dana Lovell is changing her effective date to JGS secretary to October 16, 2020.
Okay, thank you, Laurel. All right, anything else to either the consent or any other part of the agenda?
Is there a sudden budget transfer?
The budget transfers?
Charlie said the one for facilities, there's also student services one.
All right, so that's also for the consent agenda? The budget transfer? Does anyone have that information?
Okay, one more thing.
The one more thing?
The one. Is that it? Nope, that's the one Charlie just did.
I haven't pulled up.
I have it. Heidi, you got it?
Oh, I see. It's a biggie. So I have it, so it's a budget transfer for $97,364.79 from Transportation Coded Handicap 30, middle school 30. And it's being transferred to Tuition Private Other Middle School and Tuition LAAs outside New Hampshire Elementary.
Okay.
And we're out of district placement.
Out of district placement, all right. Thank you, all right. So we have all of the consent agenda as well as any other changes. All right, great. Thanks. Okay, so public comments, we're at first place. So we have 15 minutes. And want to give the number and?
Yeah, of course, so 603-933-0973 is one way that you folks could text in a comment that you have. You could also use the chat window or through the participants tab. You could raise your hand, that way we could address you publicly. In any case, please use first, last name, and the town of residence.
Anything coming through?
I'm not seeing anything right now.
Okay. Well, there's another chance towards the end of the meeting, so why don't we progress? We'll go on to the superintendent's report.
All right, well, thank you for those who are in attendance and have decided to join us instead of the Patriots game out there. So it's very, very good of you. Basically, we've, we just, we keep on going. We're doing some great work. I've had an opportunity to go into all the schools, spend a little bit of time in some of the classrooms, some of the outdoor classroom experiences that have occurred. And I have to say that the teachers, the paraprofessionals here, Jeffrey Ringe, are just doing a very good job in a difficult, difficult time, in a difficult situation. So the dedication, the hard work going is just much appreciated. So the next week, and really starting toward the end of this week, we're going to be going into some formal assessments. Both will start off in the elementary school with some of the, the third, fourth, and fifth grade will be doing the math and English language arts, New Hampshire SAS, which is the New Hampshire State Assessment. We'll be using the interim assessments to get some information on where our students are at currently. Also, we'll be utilizing MAPS or the NWEA, it's the same thing, in all grades up through grade nine. And then we'll be doing some SAT prep for 10, 11, and 12. Of course, the PSATs are going to be taken this year by 10th and 11th grade students. And our SATs are going to be taken next Wednesday by our seniors. The SATs were supposed to happen last spring for our juniors, and so that cohort of individuals missed that window. And so the window is next week. So during the Remodel Day, those individuals will be coming on. So that's what's going on in the area of assessment. We last week put out, pushed out a video for the state of the district. I would say it's a partial state of the district in that we last year tried this online kind of video approach. We got some good feedback. We had about 400 individuals, a little over 400 individuals last year who had viewed it, which was much better than the 20 or so that had come in person for one of our first state of the district. However, we got some feedback last year and said the 20 minutes was a little bit too much, and we had broken it up into four different sections. And so what we've determined to do this time around is to release a video, perhaps a little bit more than once a month during this timeframe to make sure that we are covering all the items that really need to be talked about with the district and ongoing curriculum instruction, safety, technology, and so forth, but to do it in smaller pieces at a time. So I'm happy to say that as of this afternoon, we had approximately, I think it was like 495 or 498 or something like that views. And so the viewership has gone up a little bit, and we want to keep making sure that we're improving on our videos. We did have some constructive feedback given to us about this last one, which we've taken and will make the adjustments for the future, just making sure that we're as inclusive as possible of all the schools, all grade levels, and so forth, it's important to do. And then budget meetings, we have, we almost never stop talking about budget, but certainly our formal budgeting process comes around in November and December, a little bit in January, and all the way through March, really, when we vote, that we're going to be working on making certain that we can get things situated sooner this year. So with the help of the, sorry, the Finance Committee, which is relative, a relatively new committee. It did start last year, and we think that would be, with the addition of that last year, we were able to create some efficiencies. We're planning on doing that again, maybe build upon our work that last year. And so we're starting our budget conversations with our administrators, the ones in charge of various sections like the middle school or the high school budget, the facilities budget, technology, and so forth. We have all those scheduled for our first round meetings, and we'll continue to have several meetings over the course of the month with the goal of having our draft budget to everyone earlier than typically done. We're thinking the second week of November is our real goal, first or second week of November is our goal, but certainly before the Thanksgiving holiday. And that's it for now.
All right, thanks. I don't know if you guys all watched, had a chance to watch the state of the district, but I did, and I thought, I agree, it was, we're growing in terms of our quality and viewerability, but I thought it was informative, that was good, thanks. John?
Ruben, is there anything new in terms of the strategic plan grading system or the learning management system? I know we acquired it last year, we're doing a test year with it, but is there any update on any of those?
Sure. The learning management system has been put together. There are some individuals who are utilizing it right now. This curriculum instruction assessment team needs to get on a regular schedule, and we'll be determining how best to roll that out over the course of the year, certainly to the goal that we are often running completely by the beginning of next year. As this year, we've talked about it being something that people can join in and take advantage of. I think, given the feedback we've had from the few people who have already started working on it, that it's very, it's very user-friendly. And so we need to have some formal professional development around that, and a lot of our time was used up early on, and so we have to be a little strategic about that. So the learning management system, data systems, you know, after this assessment will be, that CIA team is going to be working on setting up a good regimen of how to utilize data the best, which will feed into our data dashboard that we've been working on. We've been a little bit stalled on that lately because of some other more pressing issues and other types of dashboards and so forth that we've had to develop, but that's still in the works. The grading, I wouldn't say that there's any changes per se. I think that the middle, high school is being more specific. I do have, I do get a lot of the emails from the schools. And so I know there was a conversation at a, maybe last week, at a CHS JRMS meeting, I think on Tuesday, possibly Wednesday, about learning goals, proficiency scales, and grade reporting. So just going over mostly about how to put information into a, either web to school, I guess in this case, that accurately describes what the student is being graded on. So rather than, for instance, in a social studies class saying, "Unit three test," which tells people nothing. There are specific scales that we have that have the learning targets in them. And so those learning targets, we're taking that next step that we've already said we were going to do, that many people are doing already, and saying, "This is what we need to do now." We're at a point where, listen, when you put the grades in, it's going to be based upon the content, or the skills, or the depth of understanding in the skills that are being asked for. And so that's what we're working on. The parents will still see the numerical scores, you know, the 100-point scale. You know, they're still having conversations about zeros, ones, twos, threes, and fours. And that school talked about conversions, like what a three could convert, because there are some middle school teachers in specifically one grade level in particular that is utilizing that four-point scale a lot more. But so, because we're not there to, we're not at the point of being able to utilize that across the whole system, we would need a lot more communication about that with our community and our families. Before we did that, would be that they, you know, they've created kind of a equality of, let's say, for instance, a three, if you get a three, you're at an 86% or a B. A four would be at that kind of 100%. Two would be at a 72, that sort of thing. So it's still passing, but it, it might not be proficiency at that point in time either. So just taking the next steps of proficiency.
So it sounds like what you're looking at for assessments is the evidence column in the progressions.
Yeah, yeah. So that, I think you're right, yeah, exactly what you said is that you're looking at the evidence column in the progressions. Now, we've done a lot of work with the English language arts and the math evidence columns. So in theory, those would be the easiest ones to assess. And the CIA team, as part of this job, especially the curriculum group, is going to be working on a schedule of working with all the curriculum, getting people to add to those bodies, that sample body of evidence.
Are the updates to the progressions available on the website?
Those, I, we have not put the updates to the progressions on there because I want the CIA team to meet and make sure that they do an overview of it. Plus, with some website changes, we haven't added to that curriculum page at this point in time. One thing that we desperately need to do, and is we have a few, a couple new teachers. One in particular in the area of middle school mathematics that needs to spend some time to review the new documentation that's, that we've put into place. And so that's, that's the next step in that area. But it's a good time to have a conversation about that because we're going to be doing the New Hampshire assessments, the interim assessments, which give us some good information as well, and maybe we could tie it into the curriculum conversation.
All right, I have a question for you. Ruben, so, you know, with these assessments that are coming up, seems like our students would be pretty rusty when it comes to like normalized testing and, you know, having not had them for eight months for sure, probably not even had any, you know, full assessments within any classes too much in the last three weeks. Is there anything we can do, not to, you know, to help take away some anxiety, like suddenly there's going to be a test? I mean, that seems abrupt to me.
Well, I think for the 10th through 12th graders, that's what they're going to be doing, is they're going to be doing some practice assessments ahead of time, and some of that's already happened as well earlier this year relative to the SAT or the PSAT. The, the way we view it with the other assessments is because they're not specifically the state counted assessments, they're more for the purpose of us gaining information and also being able to provide information to the learners where they're at. So it's really more formative than it is anything else. So the New Hampshire SAS interim assessments are formative in nature, so they don't get reported as the state scores, for instance. They're, they're tools for us to utilize to teach them. So I think the conversations need to be that you do your best, and that, and I think that can help with the anxiety of it, and it's not high stakes at this point in time. The SAT, however, for those seniors, that does count. That is counting as their state assessment. So that is a higher stakes type of thing. Plus, the SAT in general is a little more useful for their after-high school life, and so many of them are going to want to do well on them. So hence the practice sessions.
Yep. At a future meeting, could we have a breakdown of the numbers of students in the different grades taking the PSATs and the SAT?
Yeah, I mean, we can, we'll get all that. We have a lot of data work that we need to do. Probably bring to the education committee first.
Yep.
Some of the items on the agenda, we would, tonight even, we would have taken, brought to the education committee first, but because of a lot of what's going on, we have to skip some of that. So I figured we'd bring some of it here tonight for, to see some of the work that's happening.
But clearly, I'd just like to second that. Understandably, the education committee would be in the first place, although, you know, depending on whether, how often you can meet, I know that that's part two. But it's good to hear that there's SAT prep going on. I think that's a great thing, and maybe you could include that in the future. You know, superintendent's update, we'd be nice to hear a little bit more about what's planned and, you know, how that's, how that's going.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions, or are we? All right. Moving on to the consent agenda. I think we have all the changes, so I'll.
Yes, could we pull the minutes for the 23rd, please? Both public and non-public?
Great, okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, can I have a motion then for the consent agenda minus the September 23rd?
We make a motion that we accept the consent agenda minus the October.
September 21st?
23rd, sorry.
23rd? Yeah. Okay, thank you, Patty. And second, John, thank you. All right. All those in favor, aye? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed and abstained? All right, so it's 600. All right, and then for September 23rd? I need a motion for that?
A move that we accept the September 21st, public and non-public.
Okay, thank you, John.
23rd.
23rd, yep.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I heard Heidi first, then. Thank you both. All right, so all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Abstained.
Thank you, and that's 501. Carries? All right, so we're on to our presentation.
So I'm going to try to allow Dana Jackson in right now as a panelist so that she can more freely present some of the information.
Okay.
And just as a preface, you know, to bring, you know, this right here. We have often been asked to talk about the perk projects a little bit. Now, there were a lot of them this year, this is just one. And I haven't reviewed every single one yet, but in looking at this specific project, it had a lot of, I think you'll find, have a lot of elements to it that we've been talking about for a variety of years, for a number of years. And so I think, you know, while there might be more work that needs to be done with all of this, it's, I think that asking questions and giving feedback is, is a good opportunity to do so.
Thanks.
So Dana, you are in, you want to just talk just a bit so that we can hear you?
Can you hear me okay?
Maybe they're speaking.
I can, I can hear you, I don't know if the rest of us can. Is there anyone who could go a little louder?
I have to use my teacher voice? How about, can you hear me now?
What's the range of people I can hear on that side of the room?
Very little.
Coming in pretty quiet. Give me a moment.
I keep my mics up as loud as I can.
We have these great big speakers here. Yeah, I know, that's why I said it was just with Jeff, but I can't hear it.
Just trying to get the speaker running, because right now you're off my audio.
Did that help any?
Oh, yeah.
That did help quite a bit. I don't know if that helps enough for everybody else on the other side of the room. Charlie, Laurel?
It's okay, it's not great.
So Charlie, if you can hear, Laurel, can you get it?
I think so.
John, can you get it? All right, as long as you continue to talk up, we'll hear you fine. All right, and I'm just working on trying to get you the screen for yourself.
Might share it now?
Yeah, you should be able to share it now.
Okay, all right. So Ruben and David had asked if I would come and kind of present my perk and what I did this summer. And it was on career exploration, but where I need to start is right here. Can you see that? The ELO page?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so if you don't know who I am, I'm, I am the ELO coordinator, and extended learning opportunities is where students are able to create a learner-centered, project-based learning where they kind of drive their own individual learning. And under that umbrella is career exploration. And what I found was, students who need to do, who want to do career exploration, they really don't know where to start. And an ELO is really, it's just, it's students driving their, their, you know, their learning with guidance from teachers or other administrators or community members. So looking at that, I had a lot of kids that wanted to do career exploration but hadn't, again, no idea where to start. So that kind of leads me into why I thought there was such a need to have career exploration. So basically, my perk, let's see if I can get rid of this. Get rid of this, you don't need to see me. Okay, oh, that's much better for me. So basically, my project was on creating a structure that students could use their own pace to go through career exploration and, you know, following learning progressions and putting in some, some ways that they can show evidence of their learning. So the other piece, the other piece is that I'm right now teaching a career exploration class. So all these pieces kind of come together. And in that class, my students are using this site right now, and I'm kind of guiding them through. A few years, well, actually, about 10, 12 years ago, when I was on the eighth grade team, we had this awesome project where every eighth grader picked a career, went out into the community, learned how to budget, wrote checks, learned about insurance, and all this great stuff. And over the years, little bits and pieces kind of got set aside for whatever reason, transportation or schedules. And I always felt that it was very unfortunate because the eighth graders loved doing that project. And right now, we have a need for, to get our learners interested in life after high school and making them understand what we're doing in high school is going to help them. You know, the skills that they're learning and the things that they're doing. So basically, I set this up into four parts. And if you have a question, let me know, you don't have to wait till the end, I'm comfortable with either. So I broke it up into four parts. And the first thing that they do is they come in and they're going to assess themselves. So they're going to be creating their own career plan, which will tie in very nicely with our personalized learning plan. So hopefully, those two can kind of combine over the next few months to work all as one. So they're going to create their own plan, and they're going to do different types of assessments, finding out about themselves, things that they're interested in, what their learning style is, what their strengths and workplace skills are, all these great, all these things about themselves that I think a lot of them don't think they have already. So when you talk about workplace skills, they don't, they don't understand the connection between what you're doing in class with deadlines or, you know, your impression or being on time or working as a team. They don't view that as something that's going to carry over into work, into the workplace. So they need to kind of make that connection. And. And, you know, what do you value in work? What do you want in environment? They have so many options out there now. It's not all about, you know, just graduating and going off to college. There's so many things that students can do and I don't think they're really aware of those, those choices. So right now, in my class, this is what they're kind of going through. They're walking through the assessment part. And it's really kind of cool to hear them talking about how, you know, well, I didn't realize, you know, making appointments with my teachers, I mean, that's something that I'm gonna use depending on what my job is. So even a lot of this remote learning pieces are tying in. And it's really cool to see their connections. So we've spent a lot of time going through, finding out about themselves, collecting data. I do have them, only because I, I have, I feel very strong, I thought this, I was really proud of myself, I guess. I don't usually say that, but I set them up to collect data. So they're gonna sit, they're gonna collect all this data about themselves. Okay, they are, and this is kind of those formative assessment pieces where they're doing different surveys to figure out what's gonna fill in this chart to eventually get to the writing progressions and using a summative as to writing their own career plan and having to include all of these pieces. So that's the part we're at now, where they're just finishing up. The next step is they're gonna explore. So we're gonna move on to exploration. And here, again, we're gonna talk about your dream job. What is it? If you could do any job in the world, you know, what would it be? So we kind of dream a little bit and we talk about how some of these things are not necessarily a far reach. We talk about the different career clusters, you know. New Hampshire has 16 different career clusters and in all these jobs out there and how they tie into these, their likes and dislikes. So they have to narrow it down, they have to get a couple of careers that they are really interested in. And then they're gonna research. So they're gonna create this comparison, almost like a Venn diagram where they're comparing similarities and differences between two jobs that they're very interested in. We talk about options after high school. We have some activities that we do. We talk about pros and cons of each one of these choices. You know, they have to state their claim, what are they gonna choose to do and why are they gonna do it? They have to be able to support that claim with, with strong evidence of why that's gonna be the best option for them. Talking about who influences our careers, lifelong learners, and some articles that kind of go in with that piece. The third step is the planning part. We talk about SMART goals, how to set a goal. And it's funny, because we just talked about these as a staff today, about setting SMART goals and having all these pieces so that it's not just a dream. It's not just something, oh, someday I'm gonna do this. So actually putting those pieces into setting a goal. We're gonna talk about writing a resume. We're gonna talk about writing a cover letter. We're gonna talk about different types of skills. We're gonna practice interviewing. So some people might get some calls and maybe asked to come in to do some mock interviews, which would be super helpful. You know, how do you prepare for that? First impressions, filling out job applications and even thank you cards for when you're done. So lots of writing in there, lots of having to understand kind of the process. The last part is, is the kind of life skills piece. And this is, I'm not quite done with this one. This one is a work in process. But I'm getting there. But the last part is to kind of think about them as a whole. What do they need to know? Talking about self-wellness, you know, be mindful. This is a great, this is a time that's really tough in knowing yourself and knowing your stressors and what are needs and wants? To be a happy person, what is it going to take? A lot of that executive functioning thing, time management, making appointments on a calendar, being organized. And I wanna get into the finances piece. We've lost sight of that, I think, and know that there's, oh, I'm sorry. Does somebody have a question?
No, I don't think there's another.
Okay, I thought I heard somebody talking, so. But managing finances, talking about credit cards. I mean, when we did this with the eighth grade, people would come in and talk about a credit card because they're gonna believe it from somebody who's really works at like a bank rather than, you know, their parents or myself saying credit cards are, you know, they're not free money. So getting people from the community to come in and talk about these, these types of things. And then talking about a paycheck. Where does it go, other benefits? We went, last year, we had the chance to go to Millipore and Joe was awesome with them explaining how benefits, you know, and pay work together and, and they got a lot out of that because that was somebody in the community that they knew that was able to kind of say, this stuff matters. This is the, this is the stuff that you need to be aware of. So it is still a work in progress. My, you know, my goal is that when they're done with this, they will have a portfolio. They will have a number of things in their folder that they can use to, you know, move forward. Some of the kids that are in 10th grade right now, you know, 11th grade, they might change their minds. They might, you know, find different interests. So it, so it just stays with them as we go through. For the future, I would really like to see this tie in 6 through 12. You know, I have, I have to start somewhere and because of the ELO piece and the career exploration piece, it was a nice tie-in. But I think it needs to be more. And each grade level have something specific that is related to careers. Sixth grade has maybe people, speakers that come in. And seventh grade does a job shadow, and eighth grade. So those are kind of the things that I'm thinking at moving forward. This will tie in really well with their learning plans. We're working on, you know, each student, writing their own learning plan and figuring out their individual path. One of the things that I remember a lot is the tracking. And if you're on the business track or if you're on the, you know, hospitality track or... And the problem with that was that it's a track and there's really not a lot, enough areas for people to kind of wander off the track. And one of the things that I, I think some of the students are, realize with doing this or doing even ELOs, is that what they might not wanna do. You know, I had a young lady who spent some time in an elementary school because she thought she wanted to be a teacher. And after she was done, she said, nope, that's not what I wanna do. But she wants to do something with counseling of that age. So it was good for her to know that, you know, maybe she doesn't wanna be in the classroom and spending all that time to find out later, but she wants to do something else with them. So she wants to work with some speech pathologists and some counselors. So it's, it's a great opportunity for students to kind of think about their future and make their next few years at school worth, or, I wanna say worth to them, but like relevant in their minds. I, I know there's some great things, you know, moving forward and I'm just really excited about this. And I know some of you have personally sent me either emails or spoken to me about having, about coming in and talking to my, my class. And I haven't forgotten about you. I'm just making, trying to make some connections between the interests of the students and people willing to come in and help. Boy, so I feel like I just flew right through that. Did anybody have questions?
Dana, this is Patty Farmer and this is really great and it's really designed well for the age group that you're geared for. It's very easy and I think it's very well understood. I'm curious about students who are going, getting part-time jobs now and any advising that's happening in terms of alignment with maybe some interests or some skills. And then also helping students who are doing volunteerism to demonstrate transferable skills. So what, what skills transfer, say, for an interact organizer? You know, a special event organizer? How do you help them see their, their path from that type of activity?
Yeah, no, I totally agree with the, the transferable skills. That piece is not, it's a little weak in there now, but that is one of those things that, you know, they do need to understand when they're in clubs, when they're in, when they volunteer. Definitely that connection and how those skills will carry over. For the work piece, as I said, a lot of things fall under the ELO umbrella. And there are things like work-study, there's internships, there's work-based learning. So there's a lot of those pieces, but from my point, we have to kind of, we have to do it right. So it's a lot of finding out from the state what needs to happen before we can send students out into, you know, different environments. I know some students have work already, but it's not really set up for them to say, okay, I'm working, I need to get credit. There are a few students that are doing a little of that, but we're tying in learning progressions. So it's not just go to work, sign your name and, you know, you get a credit. It's, okay, well, this is what you worked on today. I have a young man who's rebuilding his engine in his car and he's taking video, he's showing how he uses math, he's using writing skills to kind of explain and show how he's putting this thing back together. So it's taking that interest, like you said, and tying it into real-world experiences and saying, this is, this is where it connects. So yes, I do agree with the, more of the work-study. And like I said, we're heading in that direction. I would love to see some more of that and some more internships. And it's been kind of difficult right now. There's, they're just starting to kind of open up and inviting us back in to their workplaces. So to have people go in and even interview or job shadow. So we're just starting to get back into the, to be able to do, you know, kind of go out into the workforce and get some of that real-life learning. That makes sense?
Yeah, thank you.
Other thoughts or questions for Dana? Heidi?
Hi Dana, I think...
Heidi, sorry.
This looks fantastic and I, I feel like it's something that all students should be required to take. How many students do you have right now in your class?
Right now, I have 12. Basically because of space and remote learners. But it's a really nice size because they're kind of telling me what works and what's not working and what I'm forgetting. It's really good to have their point of view in saying, you know, this makes sense or I don't know how to do this. And I think they feel really good because they're helping me do this. Like they're helping to plan and just having that ownership. I'm not sure how many I've signed up for second semester. And I'm hope, like you said, I think that in some capacity, all students should have to do something like this. And I know, moving forward, there might be something in the near future that comes like that. But I agree, I think this is something that all students should have to go through.
Yeah, I think, or, you know, through guidance, students have done some career exploration in the past, but I don't know how robust that is at each grade level in high school and it just seems like, you know, all of the components that you have in here are so important. And I guess I would just like to say, I'd like to see this grow and become something much bigger than where it is. But I mean, you have to start somewhere, so it's...
I know, and I would, I'd love to have a class of, you know, 30 kids, but we don't have them big enough for that. But I, but I would, I welcome that. I would love to have something like that. And I know that there's little pieces here and there. They do some skills in, in like social studies that have to do with wellness. They have some in math that have to do with budgeting, but nothing really connects. They, they have a tough time taking something from one class and connecting it to something in another class. We did, we did an activity today that was called, "Is School a Real Job?" And we went through all these different skills and I said, how do you use them in a class? And how do you use them in the workforce? And it was kind of eye-opening because there was, I think, 15 different skills and most of the students had about six or seven IDKs. What do you mean, you don't know? This, being on time, you don't know how that's gonna work in the workforce? Like, they have a tough time connecting. So yeah, I agree, all in one place, give it to them, show the connections. I think that's gonna be very meaningful.
And just one more thing, I think everyone probably would agree, we've had conversations before about the piece on finances. It's been a request from our community, it's been a conversation we've had here. We know there are various resources out there. But again, it's something that, you know, I don't think we've, we've created a system where we provide that foundation for all partners. And I think, again, it's just one of the important pieces of what you're doing and I would like to see be something that reaches everyone eventually, sooner than later. Thank you.
So Dana, I just wanna say, you said in your presentation that, that the goal is, you know, 6 to 12. And that was basically what I was gonna ask was, okay, this is great. Which Heidi also addressed her a bit, but we need to, you know, start younger. The other thing I was just thinking, and I know both you and I are on the education committee with the chamber.
Yes.
But at some point, you know, I don't know when that's gonna happen again. But at some point, I think tapping into that again as a resource, you know, for our, our locals to help with making those connections
Yes.
will help your job a lot.
Yeah, and I, one of the, unfortunately, last year with the cancellation of our Career Day, we had an overwhelming amount of people that were presenting. We tripled what we had the year before. And I still had people that were trying to, you know, get a time and sign up and it was amazing. And I, and it's the, the community support that's out there. And I do, I wanna tap into that right now while it's still kind of fresh in people's mind. You know, it's just getting those situations where I can, you know, make a connection where this student, I think, would learn a lot from this person, the community. Or this community member might wanna come in and talk about finances or insurance or buying a car. We used to, we used to have somebody come in and talk about buying a car or buying a house. You know, all these people that... So yes, I, I look forward to kind of tying that back in and reaching out again for some support.
Any other thoughts for Dana? John?
Dana, hi John, my pleasure. Just one question. Is there anything else that you need from us? You know, in terms of support from the board in any way or...
Oh, boy. You know, I think right now, I think when I have those things that I need support with, I feel comfortable enough to kind of send that and make that request. Everybody's been so supportive and, and you've all, you know, let me come and talk about my, you know, my projects and, and that's just getting the message out there and having a clear understanding of what's really going on and what's, and where we're really going. I think sometimes that is the missing piece where it's, there's that disconnect between, you know, the, some of the things that are going on in school and the school board and... and how we can kind of tie those two things together. So I will start making my list of things that I can ask for help and I will let you know. But I appreciate you, you, you all on that. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Very nice. Thanks Dana.
Yeah, thank you Dana, I really appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Anytime.
Okay. Discussion? Emergency funds?
So discussion with emergency funds. Basically, it's more of just an FYI, but just to open it up for public, you know, conversation in public. It's not really news to most districts, most communities that, you know, many schools have to purchase and spend a fair amount of money with things that they have not budgeted because we didn't budget for COVID last October, November. That being said, I will say that we are managing our funds well, that we are certainly doing well in the area of staffing from a, from a fiscal standpoint. We, there are some hires that we still need to make. We have more funding in transportation and some other areas. And so we'll continue to manage that. That being said, there are some funding sources that we do have access to in case things get tight. And so in talking with the Department of Education last week, I had requested earlier whether there were going to be more funds distributed because the CARES Act funds that we have, the ESAR funds of about 275,000 are about used up. So we have used them. I think we've used them in really intelligent ways with the air purification systems, with many, you know, the PPE, everything else that we've had to purchase. Certainly we have to purchase more of some of these items, cleaning supplies and so forth throughout the course of the year. So in doing so, and who, you know, not knowing whether other things are going to be popping up, I wanted to make the board aware of where, you know, funds can come from. So one area is we can utilize our unassigned fund balance from last year if that was something that we absolutely needed to. That's a little over $600,000. We talked about that a little before. I am not recommending that. We are not in a place where we would need that. I believe that that money needs to go back to the taxpayers. We carried over, the second area is that we carried over about 2.5% that we're allowed to for emergency purposes. Those funds right there, should there, we, we come up to a time where we think that we might need to have a plan as to utilizing those funds for things that were unbudgeted for relative to COVID, we'll certainly draft that plan and have that conversation here. The process would be that we'd have to provide a letter to the Department of Education expressing specifically what the plan would be, how the money would be used, what the emergency is. In this case, it's a little bit easier to put forth, as there have been some districts that have already gone through and done this and had some success in accessing their funds. The Department of Education will be sending me, or I requested from the Department of Education that they send me some sample letters or at least one sample letter that has been provided to them. That was the commissioner's suggestion to me. So I'll follow up on that a couple more times if needed, if necessary. And so that fund is about 400 some odd thousand dollars. The intent is not to utilize that. And again, though it has not come our way, we do think there's a good chance that the districts who have utilized their ESAR funds, the CARES Act funds, will be able to perhaps tap into some other, either carryover funds for, you know, that other districts haven't utilized or some transferable funds, you know, from ESAR that maybe other districts haven't utilized. For instance, if they're fully remote and they haven't been working on their air quality systems and all of that, maybe, maybe they just haven't utilized their grants. There is actually a fair percentage in the state of New Hampshire that has not utilized that. So there would be repurposing of funds possibly. And there might be some other funds that the governor, mayor be able to release. So that's all. We've been having conversations. I think there's a good chance that more grant funds will come for the purposes of emergency or COVID-related items. But just wanted to give you kind of a, an idea of where we were financially right now. We have, in looking at the finances today, we have about 2.8 million that has not been encumbered. Of that 2.8 million, including salaries and benefits and benefits, including retirement and FICA and all of that. We have about a half a million, you know, certainly that's going down as we either do some contracted services or seek to hire more custodians and so forth. So we'll keep you updated as to how that is all going. We have some other areas in student services that are lower this year, but we might have some increases in out-of-district placements that have people moving in and so forth. So that might be a balance there. But I feel pretty good in the area of special ed services. So this was just really to bring about awareness of, if there's a situation, one, awareness in that we need to continuously talk about our, our finances this year, probably more, more often than in other years. We are in good shape. That being said, things can turn quickly and everything is very expensive right now. And so just wanted to let you aware of if we run into an area where, hey, it would be best to go and try to utilize these funds. The letter going to the Department of Ed would require board signatures, board approval and so forth to go. It wouldn't be something that I could actually send.
Any discussion on the emergency funds?
I think that last bit answered my question. So my question is going to be, what is the board's role here? And I guess it is to petition, actually.
The board would be petitioning to the Department of Education, yes. It would, you would approve a letter with a specific plan and outline as to how those funds would be utilized.
All right. Any others? Okay. All right, thanks very much for that. I'm sure we'll be hearing more. Next is the hiring authority. We gave.
This is the date, October 10th.
Right, up until now. So the question is, going forward, are we going to continue this for another month? Two months, or we can be done?
So I was just saying, we're not in the same kind of emergency situation that I think we were in. I do believe that while we're still looking for a guidance counselor at the Jeffrey Grade School, I'm able to hire substitutes as, as need be without having to go through a lot of, like the school board and so forth. That's a, that's a more of a transient job anyhow. So, you know, possibly some custodians down the road, but it's going to take time for, I mean, I, I know exactly who's applied and who's not applied and so forth and how many. So right now, I don't see the need to continue it. Unless you feel that just in case, you know, you'd like to be able to act fast. The guidance counselor is a big one at the grade school right now. We've been able to secure nursing services, not a new nurse, not a, not an employee, four days a week. She started today. That's a contract. If we go remote at any point in time for a long period of time, we can, you know, stop that contract and deposit, yeah. So we're in good shape there. And we felt that that was the more fiscally responsible, well, I think all the way around responsible approach to.
I'm sorry, what does that mean, nursing is a contract?
She's a traveler. She's a traveler. She's a contracted person.
Yeah, we found a service for nursing as we were having conversations during some meetings that we had relative to nursing and making sure that we had nursing services offered all the time, that we found this service that we would pay. You know, we don't pay for the benefits and things like that of an employee, but that we choose the number of days that we needed and it's in case we have either a nurse out and we need to have a nurse. So the person's right now learning the practices of all the schools so that they're going around to the entire district. They'll spend, if there's no substitute need, then that person will just, it will be on a schedule going from, I think, like today was the high school. RMS, I think, is going to have a couple of days. I think JGS has a couple of days next week. And you're spending a couple of days at each location right off of that, just to kind of learn how things go in each school for preparation in case of the need.
And so they, they're, if the nurse isn't out there, just increase the capacity?
Increase the capacity. I will say, I think this is a pretty honest assessment. Cause I, I'm the liaison for the nurses, so we work together quite often and at least once a week, but more, more than that usually in this timeframe. They, they, they're moving pretty, pretty quickly. So for instance, this past Friday, when we got some news about a potential issue, not so much in our schools, but from outside in the community, we had to spend a good deal of time trying to find out the truth. First of all, contact the DPHS, get some information from them, then get some communication out. And so they helped with some of that communication and just making sure that we were doing everything equally across the school. It started right here, but really it had nothing to do with the middle school, high school. It was about the elementary nurse, you know, schools. So we were able to handle all that and everything worked out well and fine. There, there are no issues and there's no, all, all the contact tracing was dealt with and, and it was fine through DPHS. But that takes up a lot of time. And so if there are situations where kids need supports, it's good to have another person.
Is this funded through the ESAR funds?
This could be funded through the ESAR funds. So if we have any funds remaining from like after we spend, because you, when you do the grants, you say, I'm going to estimate that we're going to have $20,000 for this service. If it turns out to be $15,000, then I have $5,000 that I can utilize. If we get another grant, whether it be through this same funding stream or through some other funds that come our way that are our emergency funds that the feds have given the state to utilize, we would go and write it that way as well. So it is possible. Right now, we're fine even without that, but certainly we're keeping track that we would not do this unless we, because, because of COVID.
So.
It's, it's an expensive year.
Yes. Thoughts about the hiring authority?
Well, if we take no action, it expires, so it would have to require positive action.
Right.
I think we could let it expire.
Just let it expire?
I think that's fine if you're, if you feel we're in like, we're not in a.
I feel, I feel like, I'm, I'm feeling very much in a different place than a month ago. So I'm, I'm happy with that. If something else changes, I'll, I'll let you know. But I just figured today was the date that we had talked about, you know, ending it. So just wanted to kind of report where we were at.
All right, good. All right, thanks. We're letting it expire. All right, so the next is the action item. Carrie has sent a memo about the, using the building maintenance trust fund to finance the architect and engineer.
Right, so we signed an agreement, everything's pretty much, all paperwork's pretty much done with the Turner Group, the engineering, the architectural and engineering firm. And so this was an area that actually last year, we had budgeted about half of this cost last year or two within the area of architecture, didn't end up utilizing that, but we're able to get a pass for this year. These funds are not within our budget that we passed. We do however, because this is for the purpose of capital improvement, basically, of our existing buildings, that we would be able to utilize the building maintenance reserve trust for the purpose of paying for the Turner Group.
Does the, does the board know the scope of work for this?
A long time ago.
It was a while ago, yeah, it was shared, but so I'm sure the whole scope is not in everyone's brains.
Okay, so everything from a unifying color palette for the district to facade enhancements, facade inspections because our masonry is looking crumbly, HVAC work, planning.
Bathrooms.
And bathroom upgrades. And I think the two most important things are the bathroom upgrades and the HVAC planning and maybe the masonry facade. So it would be good to get this going and in order to do so, we, it makes sense to fund it from the building maintenance trust fund. So you've made a motion, Patty, right?
I, I think I might have gotten close to one. I'd like to make a motion that we give approval for the expenditure of $88,740 to be paid from the building maintenance trust fund for the purpose of funding the architectural business with H L Turner.
I guess I would ask to modify the motion to say up to, because I think some of the pieces of work may be postponed or funded in next year's budget, but to get the ball rolling for sure.
Up to $88,740.
Okay, great. Thank you, Patty.
I'll start.
Thank you, Laurel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstain? Six zero zero?
So since we're talking about expanding funds from the building maintenance reserve trust fund, today at the facilities committee meeting, we've got an update on the work needed to get our security cameras squared away, to add some where there are blind spots, to repair some and to totally upgrade some. And to do that, we need to have spent $10,000. $10,196, which is not in our budget. We can either ask, it's not in our line item budgets for facilities. We can either authorize Ruben to find the money elsewhere in the budget, which is probably totally doable, right?
Yes.
Or we can authorize expenditure from the building maintenance reserve trust fund. Although since this is the pieces of equipment upgraded, I am of the opinion it would be better to fund it through the operating budget if we can do so.
I would agree. I think this is equipment that is going to break.
Yep.
And we're going to replace and things like that. You know, there's some maintenance on it.
So I would move that.
It's not a good fixture, it's not a permanent fixture of the, of improving the facilities. It's making them safer.
So I would move that we authorize Ruben and his team to effect budget transfers as necessary to fund the $10,200 needed to repair and upgrade the security cameras at the middle school, high school and RMS.
All right, thank you, Laurel.
Sorry.
John, thank you. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, sustain? All right, six zero zero? All right.
And then at the next facilities committee meeting, this can be like, yes, it's done and it falls right off our list. That would be great.
All right, on to the policy review, first reading.
Is this a brand new policy?
It's a fusion of two.
Cause I couldn't find, well, I couldn't access the policy online today.
So yes, it is, it would be a new policy, taking the two policies, the one policy on educational hardship or manifest educational hardship and the one on, I think it's like best interest. I think it's like best interest. Those are the two. They, they have a lot of similarity. But.
So are we going to call this two different policies or?
What we have today is two different policies.
Yeah.
What we tried to do is combine them. And when we tried to combine them, we ended up basically with. An economy of. Authorities, timeframes and so forth. So it's laid out as a single policy with two aspects and two different. Sets of criteria.
But we felt that it was better for the audience, which is really the parents here. When they're searching for this type of information, what to do, that they.
They'd be together.
They'd be together. So it's all, it's all in the same place as opposed to maybe finding one policy. And not having the other one at all, or you know, vice versa.
I, I guess my question is sort of procedural. Are we going to call this JCA? Or JEC? Or are we going to have? Two slots for the same policy in our policy?
That's a good question.
Well, I mean, sometimes we do have it listed one place with parentheses.
Because it's a duplicate, because it affects both students and employees. So it's under both.
Both, right.
Like I and J.
Right, but this is both J, right.
So we could do it just with one. You make JCA. And change the school or assignment slash manifest as you pull it off. I mean. The wording is there. Most of the time we'll just. Use a policy number to keep your separate.
Yeah. So currently JCA is titled change of school or assignment. And then JEC is the one that's considered manifest educational hardship. So that's the distinction between the two.
So you can just pick one of the other. How did you pull that up Nick?
The policy?
Yeah.
Just by going to the website.
And it pops up.
Under the school brochure, yeah.
I can't, I can't, I couldn't pull up the statute note or figure it out.
Okay, I'll, I'll look at it after the meeting.
Alright. Any other comments? I mean, it's a first reading. Nope. Okay.
The comment is, as I understand it, is. Possibly twofold. One, change it to either JCA or JEC. I assume the first and two. Two, did we, were we going to change the title or keep that title so that it had everything in?
I think we could. Titles can show very different.
Yes. So I, I think we go alphabetically with the first and then we keep the title as a hybrid.
Okay.
And I think it's a phenomenal. Move as the policy created command. Parents are constantly trying to look for stuff and we don't need to send them somewhere else.
Right.
I would say the same stuff myself as a member of the board.
Right. It's always, it's been great to try to combine a line. It's a great idea.
Great. Alright. Next one, it's a review.
Uh, yes. Policy DHC. And DHC was the board in case of the staff. On August 31, Mark Gailey asked the board to revisit policy DHE. Worked communications with staff. And on September 24th, the policy committee met and reviewed policy DHE.
C.
Excuse me, BH.
C.
DHC, sorry. The committee discussed three reasons for the policy. Reason number one was statutory, which is pursuant to RSA 194 C4 and New Hampshire Ed 302. The superintendent is charged with exclusive executive duties, which include oversight of staff. The board has no staff supervision authority. It is the superintendent's responsibility to resolve staff issues if possible. Before they come before the board as grievances or hearings. Staff communication which bypasses the superintendent, prevents the superintendent from fulfilling his or her statutory duties. Reason number two was legal. There are contractual legal requirements which prevent the board from discussing any topic or issue. With a staff member which may eventually come before the board as a grievance or a board hearing. If a board member discusses such issues beforehand, the perception of an unbiased board decision could be contaminated. Therefore, the board requires the superintendent to screen all staff communications to the board. And reason number three was practical. The most effective way for staff to resolve issues is to result, is to address them with their supervisor. If they are unable to reach resolution, the next step would be to escalate to the next higher authority or follow the grievance process. In either case, the final administration arbiter is the superintendent. So the policy committee therefore does not recommend changing policy DHC.
Any questions for policy?
Keep up the good work.
Yep. Very thorough. Thanks. Okay. We're now on to committee updates. Well, policy, I think you. Just kind of did some stuff. Is there anything else about your meeting you want to share with us?
We did talk about. Sorry. We didn't. We did some talk on JBAB, but we're still. Haven't reached any conclusion on that.
Okay.
And other than that, we're pursuing the Jays.
Alright.
With vigor and vitality.
Wonderful.
But not much velocity, right?
No. We have great aspirations though.
Yeah.
Excellent. Okay, how about facilities? I know we had some conversation earlier, but.
So, you know, some of the things facilities is discussing, talking about is parking lot work. Plans for expending the $20,000 approved by voters, which has essentially been tabled. We need to have a plan, I'm going to say by the end of February to expend in the spring. There have been improvements in the parking lot and from the facilities garage. Looks pretty great, but that has not been funded from that warner. We are looking forward to our first meeting with Turner. It's yet to be scheduled.
Okay.
And we are very interested in. Doing, getting work done to improve the athletic fields. At RMS, it is a pretty straightforward. We move and replace. Which Heather Lindstedt, I believe, is pursuing. But for, to, to really. Leverage the space in the lower fields here. At Conant, we need an assessment done. What's possible and how to sight and angle things. And to really deal with the drainage.
Right.
So. It's a whole scope of work that has to be developed.
Was that about not to bid?
No.
No.
We need a scope of work done. We went out to bid once, we had no bidders.
That's what I thought. Okay. So we're back to the drawing board?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just felt like it was ground nothing for a second.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We did call some folks. So we've got to, like you said, go out again, right? And hope that we get.
We have to break it down into smaller bite sized pieces. First, we need an assessment and then we need a design and then we need a build. We hope to get it done with a design build. We didn't get any tapers.
Right. Okay. Any other questions for facilities?
Uh, one thing I'd like to remind, I guess administration of, is that we do have a contract with a forester and part of that contract is something like. 10 hours of. Work with students.
Oh, that's awesome.
And.
Dana, are you on still?
That'd be great.
You know, that person's going to be. Tramping all over the Route 202 property and assessing. You know.
Yeah.
Timber. I would think it would be a terrific tag along. Career.
Yeah, I've phoned up career certainly, but there's a college.
Mm-hmm. Sure is. Yeah, they're identifying what land, right? Okay.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Alright, there are two district committee meetings, wellness and communication. So let's start with the wellness.
So wellness met for the first time since the spring last Monday. We're currently about seven, maybe eight members. We have one parent. Who wasn't able to come. I'm not sure that parent is still able to be part of our committee. So the first thing we talked about was that we do need to recruit some new members. We're hoping to add at least one nurse. An administrator from middle school, high school, and we would like another parent and student. We tried last year to get a student and we. Were not successful at doing that. The next thing we talked about was the triennial assessment, which is due in May. Last one was done in 2018. There are about 96 points on this assessment that. It looks at your wellness policy to see if you meet the mark of those 96 points. We know that we have room for improvement. So we are kind of doing the dividing conquer with the people in our committee to try to assess the different parts. You know, the different pieces to come back together and see where we can improve our policy. And. It's a little bit confusing because we have a wellness policy, but we also have wellness protocols because it really covers such a wide gamut of information. So. So we're assessing both our policy and really the protocols are, are part of the policy. So going through both of those documents, making sure that where we can. Address some of the areas in which we're weak, that we, that we improve them and then. Hoping to come to the board and to the policy committee to make changes to the wellness policy so that we are. Making sure we, we hit more of those pieces.
96?
96. 96 points on the assessment.
Is this driven by the state?
Uh, yeah. Uh, no, it's.
The federal government.
FBI, yeah. So. We also talked about, well, it came up as a topic of, you know, there's always been an annual turkey trot that Mr. Wilson would do and. Kind of wishing and hoping we could do something like that. And as our conversation evolved, just given the fact that we're in the world that we're in right now. We came up with the thought of doing something on Wednesdays during our remote day to promote, to promote fitness and to try and get. Students at all levels involved and to kind of create a friendly competition within each grade level so that. Our idea is to carry this through. Throughout the whole school year, but that monthly, we would take a look at how each class is doing or each grade, you know, each class and each grade level and then. Do something fun that, that provides some incentives with the boards, et cetera. So the first one being sort of focused around Thanksgiving. So we'd like to kind of. Next time we meet, we're going to pull our ideas together and then launch this at the beginning of November so that we can have our first. Recognition closer to Thanksgiving time and just to make it something that, that encourages. Physical fitness and in a fun way and, you know, that also creates sort of that friendly competition and that it's not. Solely focused on the individual, but, but creating it at the grade level. So. So we have more work to do to pull that together, but we're excited about that. We did talk a little bit about the individual. Wellness plans and, you know, because it's been a crazy year, it's been hard to get what we had hoped to implement. Starting at least in sixth grade this year. Has not gotten launched. So we're, we're going to continue to talk about that, work on. Trying to get a program running hopefully for next year, but to do a lot of that planning this year. But at the, Ruben, you probably need to. Consult a little bit more on that as well, but those are the pieces we talked about.
Well, along with that, I was in at the wellness committee meeting. But exciting to see. Learners and some adults actually in our. New fitness center.
Yes.
That has. Started off with like, you know, one or two and the last time I was in there going by it. There are about 12 and the teachers have started to utilize that as well. And so I think that's.
Right, we did talk about that as well. And I think, I think right now, and it's on our second report, I think we have two teachers who are. In there a couple of different days of the week after school to be available to be the monitors for the fitness center. So it looks great. We, you know, took a look and it's just amazing. So.
Yep.
That's it. And we are meeting again. We set a few more meeting dates. So we're meeting again on the 26th of October. And. Don't have a meeting scheduled for December, but we've planned December and January, so.
I was just thinking as you were describing how we used to do the turkey trot and the way things are now and we have to come up with something different. You know, there's a lot of virtual challenges like that.
We talked about that.
And, you know, you could create, like kids could create a team and then.
Yeah. Yeah, we could. I mean, if you have more ideas or anybody does, you'll certainly be open to them. We, we did talk about that and I think it. What came up at the elementary level was that. It's not very, that is not as exciting for the elementary learners to, to try to do something like that. But we are looking to, you know. To have the kids log their activities so that that's a way to track some of the community's friendly competition. Cause I, you know, I had, I had said that because I know friends who've done. Virtual 5Ks, et cetera. So I think it's sort of finding that balance between the saturation of, you know, how much, how much we're doing virtually and online and. You know, and, and really just trying to get the focus to be on, you know, the actual activity. So. But yeah, I think there's a lot of creative ideas out there and as we talked, as we got into the conversation more and more, everybody. I think was feeling more excited about what the potential is. So. We're hoping that we can, you know. Inspire people to get out and be moving.
Great. Thanks. Alright, communications.
I guess I'll take the phone because Fanny just spoke quite a bit to wellness. So communication committee met last week. Was kind of pushed off in the summer just due to some of the COVID related stuff. One of the things that was discussed was a kind of year end review of the communication plan. Since, you know, a lot of the makeup to that is action items. Provided a more of a final report to the committee today, just kind of on, you know, the different items and. Had they been completed or not. Other things we discussed were just kind of updates to various communication efforts, like the website. Efforts to streamline communication and processes, you know. For example, how we get information from our families, trying to set up things in a way so that perhaps through web to school, we could do an online registration process. So that we don't have to be printing out managing so many paper forms. That also would, you know, give parents the ability to update things as needed. Through that, we can kind of pull that data in through school messenger and can use it for a greater level of consistent communication. What were the other things? Also talked a bit about branding efforts online, talking about color palettes, talking about. The need for more defined logos at each school level. You know, we have some schools that have a lot of logos and they're not, you know, the greatest qualities. We have. One school that doesn't really have a logo and how do we get everybody kind of on the same playing field? Cause that is one of the things that's kind of holding up the website process is that. That's, that's kind of the first step in having your website built is having these things to, you know, start the branding process. So. Next steps is to, you know, solidify those things, try to get a little bit of student involvement where, you know, possible. Discussion about maybe altering what we have for our communication plan. And kind of almost letting it into two entities where we have one plan that is more of a guide, list of expectations sort of plan. Which kind of can grow up in a lot of the different communication efforts we've been doing. And then the second half would be the, the action plan half that we have. And having that be kind of a separate document in and of itself, because that would be the thing that's going to be, you know, updated every year at least. I think those were the main components that we made. I think those were the main components that I leave anything.
You have shown me, and we brought it up.
Oh, yeah, the School Board Association. So, yeah, all of you guys should have this email somewhere in your boxes, I believe, two weeks ago, approximately. The New Hampshire School Board Association did send out an email that was talking about communication plans and things that districts can do. And they, they kind of created a little bit of a guide to put together to send out. So this went out to all, you know, school board members and affiliates of the New Hampshire School Board Association. And the email sent out a document where they referenced six plans, three from New Hampshire and then three from other states. And our plan was actually selected as one of those plans to show everybody else, you know, throughout the state, kind of, you know, what a model plan could and should look like. So we did congratulate, you know, anybody, everybody on that committee for their work on that. You know, that was something that I think was approved on my first, you know, school board meeting. So it was, it was nice to, you know, be working within that plan and then to see that, you know, the work that everybody did prior to becoming and some of the things that we've been doing for this past year have been recognized, you know, at a state level, so.
It was terrific.
Yeah.
So, Nip, do you need to hire a graphic artist?
Oh, so it's.
Work around the JR Meatball?
Yes and no. So the, the, we have Jaffrey Grade School that doesn't have a logo. You know, they, they, there doesn't really seem to have been a history of a logo. So that's an area where we're talking about maybe working with like a bulldog or a company like that because they have really cheap rates, like they set as low as $100 to create a logo for us. You know, I've reached out and we're having conversations about could we have them create, you know, two to three different logos? We already know, we have the color palette, we have the mascot, you know, the animal being the owl. Create a couple of designs for us, pitch these ideas to the students, have the students vote so that there's a level of student involvement. At the middle high school, I've been talking with David Dustin and others and the conversation is, you know, we have two logos that are pretty old. They're, you know, we don't really know how old they are, but they're definitely older. And we've gotten to this point where we don't have original files anymore. So it keeps shrinking and shrinking and shrinking and shrinking. They're getting more pixelated over time. You know, we have this kind of thing where we're, in some ways, we're one school, in some ways, we're two schools. Do we, you know, have some sort of process where we have two new newly designed logos for each school? Do we, you know, maybe use this as an opportunity to bring the two schools officially together? We do have an anniversary this year, the 150th anniversary of Conan. So we can maybe try to have that be early student-centered and focused process. So those discussions are taking place in terms of, you know, we have, like, we have these really great sports logos that have been designed pretty recently and they're used pretty commonly for sports, but they're more of a sports item. And, you know, the high school has a crest, for example, that a student designed. And do we, you know, try to get a middle school crest as well and have that represent some of the academic components? But then also, what do we do as that overarching, you know, logo design for the middle high school?
I was gonna say, also, I mean, one of the things, and maybe I'm reaching too far here, but it would be nice if across the district that the logos were stylized. Yes. So that when you look at them, you know they're all part of the same organization.
Yeah, so right now, our biggest kind of bonding effort is that we're all parts.
Yes.
Where Orioles, where Cardinals, where Eagles and Owls.
But the images themselves, that the artist should, it should be a stylized.
Consistent.
Consistent stylized.
They should have the same artist doing the whole.
Well, so part of the thing is, is, you know, we, me coming into the district last year, RMS kind of has this new logo in a way because they painted this really nice-looking eagle on the floor. And it looks like that was something that had its own kind of process. And it's kind of, do we, you know, with that already being painted on the floor, do we have that kind of be the starting point and go from there? Do we use this as an opportunity just to rethink everything? You know, if we look at colors for the district, something that I've been messing around a lot with lately is if you go on like our Facebook page and our website, you'll notice that images are color branded now. So I'm trying to make efforts to, like, we have a school board meeting notification and that takes that like burgundy color, which is the, you know, one school district color, and then playing around with more of like a, you know, a yellow and a, like a light bronzy color. And then, you know, the middle, the middle school, high school is decided based on the, some of the things they're doing. You can see it out in the fishbowl, this idea of taking orange from Conan, blue from JRMS, having that be their color palette. JGS had a school-led decision by the students where they, however many years ago, decided they wanted their colors to also be orange and blue. So it's, do we have them be a separate color palette or do we have them be the same colors? And it's, it's that idea of how, how much do we want to unify things or not unify things? I mean, people have talked about how some districts will have one universal mascot for all their schools and they'll just stylize the mascot differently. And then you guys bring up this conversation about having different mascots and different, you know, maybe color palettes, but having them stylized the same way so that we do feel more unified.
So one of the scopes of work for the architect is a color palette for the district. And if we're going to do something different, then maybe we shouldn't have two parallel.
Efforts.
Efforts. But the look, the style, the look, the font, you know, the size should match across all schools.
Well, even, even things like fonts, I'm working with people to try to, you know, make those more universal. I'm trying to include administrators in all these conversations. The issue with a process of, you know, in architectural designs and these other things versus what I'm doing is I needed all this information months ago because it's now holding up a process.
Yep.
For website design. And if we go through the effort of me, but it's also that double-edged sword of if I just am working with administrators, I pick colors, an architect comes in, we blow it up again, then we have to pay a, you know, our, our website provider to redesign things that have already been designed. So we're in this kind of tricky situation in which, yes, I do think everything should be unified because you, you look at things like painting walls and, you know, wanting to make sure that all these colors do match everywhere. You know, there's this history of, you know, we're orange and black, but what orange are we? You know, we're red and blue, but what red and what blue? So it is definitely a conversation that needs to be had.
So can I, I'd just like to comment from our meeting. I think one of the things we, most of us agreed upon was that this is the kind of thing that could take a long time. But the, the new website is hugely important to our efforts to communicate well and efficiently. And I think either we need to pull the architects in quickly. This needs to be one of the first things that gets done. And we created a subcommittee, which we somewhat talked about, decided, you know, do you do that yet? But I just think that in the interest of being efficient and getting this website up and running, it, it needs to, it just needs to happen.
So is it realistic? You're having a meeting the 26th?
No, that's a wellness.
That's a wellness.
We don't have a better committee meeting.
I mean, it's, it's not, I think it's something that the architect could absolutely get done with, given the amount of labor work he's already done.
It's, it's certainly the time to do it. There are many, like, in talking with David Dustin, he's like, you know, we're starting to paint some of these areas, but we haven't gotten so far in the process that we completely need to blow it up. So rather than putting money in the budget to paint and then have to repaint because we've decided on different things, like, we, we do have a really good opportunity right now to be really mindful of these conversations. It's just, they need to happen.
Now.
Quick, they need to happen efficiently. And we need to also decide who's the final, you know, decision maker on some of these things? And how much of a community-led process is this? Is this, you know, a couple of administrators in a small subcommittee sitting together making a decision? Is this a, here are some options, we're going to bring it to the students and let them decide? It's, it's.
I have to lay into in that, you know, this has to be, the student-centered part of it is so important. And there, there's vast differences between a third grader at JGS and an 11th grader at Conan. And what a Conan student identifies with is going to be probably a more aggressive Oriole. I mean, why, why couldn't it, why can't they be different in that, you know, they don't all have to soar, they don't all have to be, if it's working, why break it? And can it, can it flow? I mean, I guess is what I'm saying. If, if the JRMS floor, you know, if it, if it looks good, let's keep it. You know, like, that's a silly thing to change. I mean, right, so let's, let's get a worksheet going that says what's working? What, what, what is set in terms of identity, in terms of the kids and that part of it? And then what else, what is weak? And if it's weak, then let's help it by bringing it up to the other two levels. But I, I just have to, common sense here has to prevail, please. And I, I agree, I agree with a lot of the other stuff about it. I just think that when it comes to the brand versus logo versus mascot versus, all that has to have definitions and examples and a cut sheet that really explains each of those to help everyone understand what we're talking about. And I'm not even on the committee.
Well, I have breakdowns of some of those things by specific targets. You know, I have a breakdown of colors, I have a breakdown of logos. Certainly something I can pull together, you know, and share with whoever it needs to be shared with. You know, that was a discussion in the Communication Committee was, you know, almost that idea of different student levels are going to be able to, you know, be helpful in different ways, almost. The idea of like, an elementary school, it might be best just to say, here are some options. Which one do you like the most? But with a middle high school group, it might make more sense to, you know, maybe even call out to them and say, you know, we're doing a design contest and, you know, whatever one is selected, you get to work with our graphic designer to actually, you know, formalize that logo. Because I think that, I think that ultimately it does need to be, you know, at least to some degree, a student-led effort. And also, as you said, not, not reinventing the wheel where we don't have to. You know, we, we shouldn't have to completely rethink everything, blow everything up, redo it. If we have examples of things that are good. You know, we have, we have sports logos that people identify with. There's no point in redesigning sports logos or trying to unify those to something else. But, you know, we do have these target areas that are very kind of absent of a solid thing.
And I think you'll have, I think you'll have some public comment on this topic. You know, because I see it in the chat, so let me get the public comment.
Yeah, I guess I don't necessarily understand, and a second question, or, you know, saying to lose the tradition. I, I feel like we're, we're keeping the traditions, we're keeping the, but we just need to make sure that we have proper files that can be.
Yeah, I mean, that's the biggest issue.
So we're not going to change the owl, but there is no.
There is no owl.
Yeah, you know, I'm not going to say that Jaffrey Grade School is now pink and purple and the hippopotamus is there. There's, the, the concept is that we still have these colors. We've now defined through a specific code what those are so that I can share this, this number and letter code with anybody and we'll get the same.
We get the exact.
We'll get the same orange. The, the whole idea of, you know, like a logo for JGS is, you know, if you look at the history of our student parent handbooks, there isn't a singular image. And there were discussions about why that is, and it's because there isn't a logo. If you look at our school website, the, what represents the logo is a picture of a, a piece of owl pottery. And it's that idea of how can we best honor that tradition and those values, you know? You can make an owl very aggressive and mean, but you can also make an owl very, you know, wise and playful. And that's kind of the, the idea, is just being able to get, use what we have to fill in the gaps to create things that still honor the, you know, community and the school in which they are going, you know, along with.
The other quick thing, communication-wise, was you started a little bit of a new thing for the Facebook, starting today.
Oh, yeah.
With the new teachers.
So a lot of, a lot of different efforts, you know, trying to communicate in different ways, trying to communicate different information. One of the things that I've done recently is if you look on Facebook, rather than just having things that are really text-heavy, I mean, if a administrator of Ruben sends out a letter or a note, I'll probably just put that in because the, the goal is to get it out as fast as possible. But if there's an event or something, creating like a smaller image that can just capture some of the basic information, then you can, you know, read as far into it as you choose. But today, the new thing that we launched is, a couple of weeks ago, I started reaching out to all of our new staff members, folks that have been hired on to start this school year, started, I believe, the, we had to cut off like July 1st as a hire date maybe. And, you know, just asked a couple of questions, everybody, put together short little bios, created a little template that I could use for every person. And now until we run out, every day, we're going to be featuring a new staff member on Facebook. It's going to include a little bit of information about, you know, maybe their teaching background and their teaching interests. Maybe it has a, you know, a bit of fun information there that everybody's going to have like a little fun fact. It's just kind of that unique like conversation starter. For example, today, we featured our Jaffrey Ridge Middle School music teacher. You know, he's a first-year teacher, he's got a real passion for music, he's in a rock band. He, his fun fact is he can solve a Rubik's Cube in 40 seconds. So just those kind of fun things to personalize our staff and just to kind of show everybody, you know, who they are and, you know, why they're passionate about what they're doing. And again, just kind of having that face recognition so that if, you know, you see him out in the community, you know, that's, you know, you know, that's my, that might be my, you know, child's music teacher. Or, okay, that's that person that we just hired. So just additional ways to connect people and, you know, just present more information.
John?
And just, someone mentioned a chat, someone in the chat commented about tradition and the community. I, I think that's a really good point. I was sitting here listening, I, I think having student involvement is very important. We don't want to make this a board, but we want community involvement as well. In the end, we want the community to stay supportive of our schools all the way along. We want them to feel involved, we want them to feel this is part of their community and it's something they support. And, you know, tradition shouldn't beat everything, but it certainly needs to be taken as one.
It's something, yeah. Thanks. All right. All done with the committees. It's time for public comments, which I think we all just read. One.
So, yeah, we, we got a couple, I guess just to let everybody know with the chat feature, it does get sent to all, you know, school board members. So we don't always read those comments aloud, but all board members do see them in one way, shape or form, whether it be live at the meeting or in a transcript post. So we do have a few people in the audience still, and as always, three ways to comment. You can use that chat window as it already has been used once. You can go through the participants tab and raise your hand. That way you can actually, you know, speak your comment or you can text 603-933-0973. And I guess while we're waiting for people, I could just read the comment that was made earlier to the public. So Ann Wheeler of Jaffrey, while we were talking about, you know, logos and things like that, just asked if we could include the JGS Parents Group when planning for a logo. She said they are a fantastic, fantastic energetic group with lots of ideas. Then also just said, please do not lose the traditions of this district with these changes, this community decision. There's a lot of pride in our community. And then she just said later, thank you for addressing comments. And then she's speaking district-wide, just not to, not just to JGS.
Any texts or raised hands?
I'm not seeing anything.
Okay. All righty. Board matters. John?
I'm sorry, I don't know if this fits right, but I know we have been at this for a while and we have a future item, the update on the technology plan. So I know we're not going to talk about that tonight, but we're moving into a time where our technology is increasingly important and there's still, you know, issues that we have to work on. You know, we worked earlier in the meeting to get our audio working the way we want and it's worked out good now. I'm looking at the speakers up there on the wall. This is a music room, right? Wouldn't it be cool if we could hook right into them? Maybe that's not feasible or necessary, but if we're going to move to remote at some point and considering that we're already doing. and considering that we're already doing remote for a lot of people or significant number, I just, um, what I ask, I guess, that we get at least some technology updates moving. I, I don't think, think that necessarily has to mean the entire technology plan because I imagine that includes a lot more than, you know, just dealing with these issues that have been presented this year. But, uh, I know there's gonna be internet issues. We've heard from parents who, you know, they've got three kids at home and they've got a parent working at home, or maybe two parents working at home. You know, they're sharing the same space, so how, how do they do that? How do they deal with, or if they're in an area where their broadband isn't that strong and they can't keep that many people on there? What, what are the things that we can and should be thinking about? Uh, I know we had a meeting earlier today that was some freezing up of the people who were in this building. John Leclair for about half the meeting in Calvary also had some problems because they kept freezing. And, you know, it, it's probably something relating to the windstorm or something that happened, but it would be nice to kind of look directly at these issues and try and, you know, fix them before we get into the middle of the year.
Okay, yep. I have a question for the next meeting. We nominated coaches. I'd like to understand how indoor sports are gonna work. And, uh, both for participants and spectators.
Laurel, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I'd like to understand how indoor sports are going to work, both for participants and spectators.
I, I imagine that we'll be following the NHIA guidelines, which probably are evolving as they did for the fall. So, uh, it would be great to hear from Heather and David and what they know, because it's gonna change.
Today, yeah.
How's it develops? Uh, I have to say, kudos to folks in the stands on Saturday, class of masks. David announced it at the halftime, there were additional signs. Uh, I saw people walking up and then walking back to their cars to get their masks, because we know they have them. They have to use them to go into the grocery stores. So, um, I think whatever's needed to make, and he said, you have to do this in order for us to have spectators. And then, we don't, you know, kids gotta play, gotta help the kids play. So I think whatever, um, whatever we learn, you know, it'd be neat, we talked about live streaming if we had to. And, and that's a possibility, we need to.
We need to challenge it.
gear up our, whatever. I mean, it's so important for these kids, for their continuity and for the health. But they have to have the health to be able to play, so it's, it's a two, two combined combination. But I think, uh, I, I think what we, what we would know, we'll know what we need to know, like, I'm not sure. And they may have a modified schedule, just like the fall.
Yeah.
I could tell you if we're looking into, um, company that works with the whole live streaming. And the equipment that goes along with that.
Yeah. So I, I suspect that for indoor events, there will have to be some sort of ceiling on the number of spectators that can be in the space.
Yeah, if, if you have spectators, yeah.
And, you know, would you establish some sort of lottery system to award those slots or? Anyway. All right. You go to the monitor.
I didn't hear a lot.
Oh, you go to monitor. Okay, anything else under Board Matters or future items?
I guess, Nick, can you, you, there is a comment about board members not being able to be seen and you answered that in the chat. Can you address that as to the timeline as to, because I, this has come up, we all have our cameras on, but
So, um.
the people listening can't see us.
There have been some people that have brought up the, the idea of we are running board, board meetings where if you're attending online, you can't see the board members. Um, part of the issue behind that is that we are nine people at most sitting in a room in very close proximity. I'm sure that there were a few instances where, uh, folks heard that somebody, for example, tried to turn on their computer to use audio and there was a nasty feedback sound. So the issue is that board members may be logged into their computer and following along and actually in the meeting. But because we're not using the audio pickup from the individual computers, we are, um, we're relying on two, uh, microphones that are hanging from the ceiling to pick up all the sound in the room from my computer individually. So, um, the only camera access that we have right now is the camera pointed at me, which, you know, I'm, I'm happy, I guess, to turn on for future meetings. I have to, there are some setting issues in my computer that are preventing it from turning on. Um, but what we, what I'm, I'm looking into, I'm having conversations with, uh, our IT department and others. The concept is how do we properly broadcast the board members? Um, so I could put a, you know, you could set up another computer with the audio off, put it in the back of the room. The issue is they're not really gonna see anybody anyway, you're just gonna see a big, big giant room, tiny people. Uh, so you're not gonna pick up individual, you know, people anyway.
You can come here.
Yeah, so all of our board meetings for the past, I believe, two months have been held in the going high school music room, we're in here only right now because of the microphone setup, the, uh, audio levels, because it's a music room, it's set up for audio. So we have, oh, two, four, six, eight, 10 chairs in here right now, so people can, you know, attend physically, that's not an issue. Uh, if we start getting a larger audience than that, we can, you know, consider moving or maybe set up viewing rooms, uh, somewhere else. But again, there's, you know, we're talking about whether or not we can, you know, perhaps have a, a non-stationary camera that we can maybe have somebody operate to some degree so that you can actually have it zoom in and look at individual board members when they're speaking. You know, there are teleconference units that are fairly expensive that are, have the ability to automatically track voice and follow it and, you know, point to individual people. So there, there's a potential monetary cost to doing some of these things. Again, um, for right now, until we figure it out, the best way to see the board is to actually come to the, you know, board meeting and make sure you follow social distancing, mask wearing, the other, you know, things that are laid out in our reopening plan. Um, but we are, you know, this is something that even before COVID, we had the communication plan to broadcast meetings. We had to kind of just jump on it because of COVID. But, you know, we are trying to iron out a more solid system or some sort of mobile unit so that we can have, you know, meetings in both towns that we'd be able to broadcast, you know, deliberative, deliberative session or some of these other meetings. So it is, it is in development. I unfortunately don't have the greatest timeline on it because in some cases it's, if we have to buy equipment, how long is it gonna take us to get the equipment? Uh, cause there's a lot of, you know, hangups on some of these bits. If we have a certain camera on, uh, who's gonna operate that camera? Um, you know, I'm already taking minutes operating the board meeting. I don't know if I also can split myself in half and run a camera on the other side of the room. So can we get a student, for example, to, you know, do that?
So that's, that's a great point. And, you know, as communications director, you're doing so many important things for us. We don't want you to be our IT person too. And, uh, you know, we, we do have an IT person, but he's also running pretty important and sophisticated network. So, you know, maybe we need to invest a little bit more in getting some outside help. There's about a million companies in the United States, if you include school districts and whatever, you know, that are using Zoom now and quite a few of them are, are, seem to be handling it, you know, they're looking at all the questions that you're asking and how can they answer them? Trying to have nine people that you can get on screen shouldn't be outside of the capabilities of the software. Even if we end up, you know, looking at the cost and saying, well, it's too much, let's at least find out, you know? And, and I don't think we should have Nick trying to research that because he's got enough to do. I'm not even sure that Mike Cotton should be the one that has to have to do it. And I guess that raises the question, who, but, but, uh, you know, maybe Mike could make some recommendations to us on what kind of help would be desirable.
And some of the larger districts might have some experience, we could call and ask them as well.
Yeah, part of a district that had cameras inside the room, yeah, so we, yeah, we had a specific room for that purpose.
I mean, that's, that's the thing with some districts too, is they have, they have one room that is set up to do this, whereas we
And behind the room, they have all the equipment right back there, yeah.
Right.
It's a setup.
You know, this room already has some of the technology, this is probably the room that is best set up to hold board meetings.
Right, yeah.
I mean, the biggest issue that we have is, you know, implementing things and then also, you know, just physical space limitations.
All right.
But the good news is everyone's on the same page with what is needed. So the communications committee has mentioned it, uh, community and these meetings has mentioned it, we are mentioning it here that, uh, it's, uh, we've improved in so many ways, we have more ways to improve, and so we keep on looking and to, uh, to fine tune our efforts.
All right. Anything else, anyone tonight? Can move your chair. I like that idea, Laurel, thank you. Thank you, John. With that, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.